...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk do the roll call for the city council meeting of August 8th, 2016.
Councilor Cronin.
Present.
Councilor Devlin.
Present.
Councilor Earls.
Present.
Councilor Agman.
Here.
Councilor Junta.
Present.
Councilor Tanta.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Zede.
Present.
Councilor Cameron.
Here.
Councilor Connell.
Present.
Council President O'Brien.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Late file items?
The councils will see four items on their desk. There is a treasurer's reappointment. There is a version two of the agenda, which is simply different by adding the executive session. At the end of the meeting, there'll be an executive session. That's number 18. There is a cover letter for Pomeroy, which is an appointment. And there's a special event application from Ann Orman and the chamber about a event tasting on In Street. Those four items.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public comment? Thank you. Norman Hanson?
This is a CPC matter. My name is Norman Hanson, project manager of the Belleville Congregational Church Restoration Group. Our CPC application this year is to complete a three-year effort to restore the exterior of our nearly 200-year-old historic structures. Yes, Belleville is a traditional church, but our buildings are community resources. The larger meeting house provides the largest and most acoustically sound facility in Newburyport. The Newburyport Coral Society holds up to two two-day concerts attended by up to 500 each of the days. Smaller community meetings and performances are held in our parish hall. Scouting and similar organizations do not pay rent. Again, we are a relatively small church family that serves the community. We try the best we can to maintain these structures, but it's difficult. We need and accept community support. We are extremely grateful that the CPC is recommending to you the amount of $39,000 to be awarded this year for us to complete our three-year restoration project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted Epstein?
Any questions?
Hi. I'm just here to be present in case there are any questions about an application I have for some outdoor seating. If I, from what I understand, it's going to be talked about for approval tonight. If that's possible, that'd be great. If not, you know, I'll go through any process I need to go through. And I just appreciate you looking at it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Orman?
Good evening, Council President O'Brien and members of the city council. I'm here tonight just to let you know that we are asking to use In Street. We have Parks Approval Commission for a grand tasting. We did the event last year on the NRA East side, and the restaurants felt it was too far away. So then we went to the waterfront park to see if we could have it there. There's more logistics, as you can imagine, with doing it at the waterfront park. So we now are looking at using In Street, which we have received approval from the Parks Conservancy and the Parks Commission to use that space. With the fountain being redone, it's a beautiful centerpiece for having a grand tasting of all our restaurants. And that will kick off a restaurant week for 10 days. So we're hoping that you will approve that request for us, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Lamb?
Good evening. I'm here in case there are any questions in support of my nomination to the planning board by the mayor. Live at 14 Russia Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila Mullins?
Good evening. I'm here reading a letter to you on behalf of my husband, Jerry Mullins, 7 Parsons Street.
Which agenda items is...
Sidewalks. Sidewalk ordinance.
Thank you.
I am respectfully requesting that an ordinance concerning sidewalks and trees that is on the docket tonight not be sent to subcommittee for consideration. Recently, a new ordinance was posted that required developers and homeowners that have expended $100,000 or more to improve the adjacent city sidewalks and, if necessary, to install city street trees. This measure was passed so that as improvements are made to properties, that the citizens of Newburyport will receive a community benefit. It will go a long way towards providing a funding avenue for our sidewalks that are in large part in deplorable condition and make them come up to the new sidewalk standards that are now being implemented throughout the city. This new ordinance wishes to cancel out this requirement and return the option back to our volunteer boards for consideration. They may require that the sidewalk be improved. They may want to see the street trees installed. Just to consider how weakening this new ordinance is, to remember recent history, just in the last year, the ZBA was presented with 43 abutters who were against a developer, and the developer won, Tremont Street, or a developer who disregarded the building inspector and the planning board directives and the historical commission directives and got away with it with a relatively small fine, 77 Lime Street. This ordinance would dump the requirements and give the discretion to volunteer boards, which are buffeted already by consultants, lawyers, and lobbyists. This would strike out any public benefit and leave it as the history of our city has sadly seen at the whim of politics. The original ordinance would allow some benefit to the community, and it would be done for short money since sidewalks and trees are a fraction of such developments. Responsible developers and homeowners will not only see a benefit to the community at large, but will get a return on their investment as the streetscape and neighborhood is improved, making it a more desirable place to live. I ask you to reject this weakening attempt by special interest. If it goes to subcommittee and more and more people learn of this ordinance, expect some rather heated public hearings. Thank you sincerely, Jerry Mullins.
Thank you. There's another item to check, but the item is not on the council agenda tonight. I have no idea, but it's not on the agenda right now. You're talking about something October 3rd, 2014, a letter. It's not on the agenda, so... It's not on the agenda, like I said. Move on to mayor's comment.
Thank you, President O'Brien, members of the city council. Before I give you my update, I would ask that you give me a few moments to recognize a incredible young man in our community who did something pretty remarkable a few weeks back. So I would like to ask Matt Hayden to come up and join me and the harbor commissioner, harbor master, Paul Hogg. So some of you might recognize Matt from his TV debut. So, Matt, as mayor of the city of Newburyport, it's my honor to present to you this combination for the life-saving rescue effort you performed on July 13th, 2016. You rescued a 14-year-old girl who was pulled from a sandbar on Plum Island due to the rapid incoming tide and was close to drowning. Without forethought of risking your life, you reacted with calm professionalism to save another's life. This act was one of unselfishness and bravery. On behalf of our city, it is with great pride that I present to you this combination.
For my update, I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on on Low Street this morning. Our contractor working on the force line over on Hale and Low Street hit a valve on a 10-inch gas line, and it's going to take probably several more hours before it will be welded. It's been, we had to evacuate the school with all the personnel in there. There are two homes, 107 and 109 Low Street, that were evacuated. There are about 20 to 25 homeowners currently that are impacted. Once the welding is complete, then the engineers are looking at a permanent fix. So I ask everyone's patience. There is no danger at this point, according to National Grid. I contacted higher-level management, and they came out to the site, too, to oversee what's going on. And as soon as I have an additional update from National Grid, I will send out that information. There is a small press release that has been posted on the police department's Facebook page. Yankee Homecoming. Our 59th Annual Yankee Homecoming went off without any hitches. It was, again, my thanks to the chairperson, Paul Swindlehurst, and to the executive board, hundreds of volunteers who make this homecoming work so smoothly. I would also like to recognize our DPS highway staff, who, under the direction of Tony Fornari and Wayne Amaral, who worked tirelessly to support this festival in our city. So thank you, DPS. The Intermodal Facility Garage, Andy Port and myself had a meeting in Boston with the executive director of Mass DOT to discuss the possibility of receiving directly the state earmark of $5 million as opposed to it going to the RTA. They are looking at the FTA, Federal Transit Authority, Transportation Authority, issues that need to be addressed and identified if this, in fact, does happen. And we are having a follow-up meeting with the RTA this week to discuss some of those issues. The design change of the stairwell at the request of the IAG group has been requested of our design team, and this has caused an additional delay in reaching 30%. And the FTA will not cover these costs. They've already paid for one design of the stairwell, and we added, asked for a more detailed traffic study and for appraisals on some of the properties on Pleasant Street. So as a result, and some additional facade work, which we believe was part of the original conversations with the design team from the start. So we're pushing back on the $60,000. They're asking for an increase. So we will give you more information on that as we begin to work through some of those issues. As a result of not having this resolved yet, we canceled the IAG meeting scheduled for this week because we have no new information to present to the residents. But as soon as we resolve these issues, we will get this schedule back on track. We also, as I mentioned previously, are responsible to provide relocation services to the businesses that are impacted who are in the old Fitness Factory site. RFP went out. We got four responses, and we'll be interviewing those companies this week. And I will give you more information on that as we move forward. Plum Island Sewer. I mentioned to you that we were approved from FEMA for approximately $600,000 for us to alarm the sewer system out on Plum Island. So Tony Fornari and Jamie Tucolo went out to Indiana to Airvac System to look at all of the options that were available to us. And we're able to negotiate a really good price and a good system, and you have information in your packet about that. And again, this would all be paid for by this particular grant. The wastewater treatment facility, we have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow with Methuen Construction to begin moving on this, what I've been referring to as Phase Three, the odor control of the wastewater treatment plant. And they will be working on chemical feeds, valves, ductwork, and metering pumps. Design is in process for the next phase, which are the two most important components, I believe, are the new biofilter and covering the clarifiers. In the interim, a new chlorine system feed has been added to the separator tank. This is the open tank closer to Bromfield Street, and that has also reduced all of the odorous film that was on top of that particular tank, which is now gone. And that it almost smells like a swimming pool near there in that section. Further analysis of our permanganate feed has resulted in creating a new pumping system to cover more of the plant. And despite the fact that the pump we hooked up after setting this all up died and had to be have another one sent overnight, that is up and running, and we anticipate that as this runs, we will see this interim odor controls as we work towards the longer-term fixes. The final odor control contract should be completed by May of next year. Route One pedestrian crossing and traffic circle, Andy Port, Jory Vining, Jim McCarthy, Chair of the Planning Board, and myself went into the district office at Mass DOT in Arlington to discuss our next Mass Workforce Grant, which is to address the pedestrian crossing. They were very supportive of the safety and the need for this change to happen. And we were able to reach out to Stan Tech, who came in, and they've been working with us for years on the rail trail projects, Phase One and Phase Two. And so they came in and helped us do a pricing for all the components for the survey of this particular project. And so we are hoping to move forward on this grant proposal, which needs to be submitted on the 22nd of August. Drainage projects. We have not addressed major drainage projects in the city in about 19 years, and that was the last time we bonded for drainage projects. And we've had some longstanding drainage issues that, as we met as a finance team, it made sense to us because they total about $900,000. It made sense for us to take out a bond for these. These include, in particular, the problems we've had for a long time down at Market Street when it rains in terms of the flooding there, the impact to the real estate businesses there in particular, as well as other businesses. A gentleman who lives on Tilton, when we separated the CSO, combined sewer water, he has had a lot of problems with flooding in his basements as a result of the work the city did, which needs to be done, issues on Coombe Circle, the High Street entrance to the rail trail. There are some real issues with drainage there that have to be addressed before we can continue the work on the rail trail, which is not part of the rail trail. Colton Drive also has some issues, and East Boilston, we have looked at in terms of some of the drainage issues there. So certainly, we will provide you with all the resources you need to, in committee, as you begin to address these. The Harbor Master Facility, as you recall, the initial bids came in too high. We had to resubmit these bids, and as a result, things were really streamlined, and we ended up with only a 3% contingency. As a result of the difficulty with the pile driving and the conditions that were uncovered there, and doing the utility line work where we hit ledge and cement, this has caused a 30, about a $32,000 change order. That we, with a 3% contingency, we just don't have the money in the contract to do that. So we are asking you for an additional $60,000 so that we can get through November in terms of this construction project. If we need it, we won't bond it. If we do, we will. Again, all of this project is being paid for by voter fees and voter revenue. The Kelly School, I'm very excited to say, finally, after long last, we will be closing on this project on August 31st, and construction will begin in September for the 12 condos. Brown School, the Whittier Street architects are finishing up the feasibility study within the next three weeks. We're also waiting for an appraisal on the property. And this week, we've invited the Neighborhood of Affordable Housing, which is the CDC in East Boston, who is very interested in coming up to the Newburyport area. We'll be coming and doing a walkthrough of the building to give us some more, just input on the potential adaptive reuse of this building. As we begin pulling an RFP together, it will certainly be time to pull together the neighborhood for another community meeting. 115 Water Street, again, we are waiting. We had the appraisal done. We're awaiting the report of this particular property. As you know, this is surplus property because we took it in a friendly taking so that we would have sight for the construction of the wastewater treatment facility. So the, is some need from the yacht club. There's some potential business space and then storage area that will be maintained by DPS for their equipment. So there'll be more information coming regarding that. The Harris Street Lot, we have issued a RFP to, out to the community. We've had about five inquiries about what would be the best use of that particular property. And we're going to see what happens. There is no decisions, you know, have been made at this point, and certainly we'll share with you any conversations we have about what could be the best and better use of that particular property here in the city. The sidewalk ordinance, again, I just thank you for bringing that back. I think all of us were quite surprised when we anticipated this ordinance to impact developers, not directly to homeowners. At least, that was my understanding of this ordinance. And the first three people impacted were three homeowners and were, you know, fairly devastated by the impact that this would have on their project. So I'm asking you to go back and take a look at this in terms of the impact that it has on homeowners trying to do modest improvements to their homes and being, you heard the woman last council meeting from Farrell Street who talked about the impact that this has, and she doesn't have the money that she planned for for two years for her contract as a result of this particular ordinance. So I ask you to just take a look at this again in terms of, now that we're seeing the impact. Schools, the school committee had a retreat on the 22nd of July, and we reviewed the newly released strategic plan. I do not believe Susan has put it out to the superintendent for the public yet, but I did send you all copies of it, and I would ask that you let her be the one to release this before, you know, we start posting it on blogs and other areas. There'll be obviously more information about this going forward, as parts of the strategic plan really will tie into their priorities for their budget as we move forward in the next budget cycle. Security upgrades at the high school are underway, but as you may recall, I reported to you that, again, that contract also came in way over budget, so they had to decrease the number significantly, the cameras in the second and third floors, so that we could actually move forward with the contract. In terms of the high school field project, the Coach Stallions plaque was installed, and there was a small unveiling on the 22nd. And we are meeting this week to discuss substantial completion. And the final punch list, one of the items that, obviously, we're pulled out, the netting, we're doing that separate, separate contract to get that completed to protect the residents on Summit. But the dumpster that was built is built too small, and they have to empty it far too many times, and school hasn't even started yet. The dumpster was undersized, and it's a problem, so they are coming back to redesign at no cost to the city in terms of fixing that particular problem. My thanks to the Community Preservation Committee. I think another excellent review of particular grant programs, and I thank you for your funding recommendations. I did give you quite a list from our Parks Administrator in terms of the work that our new employee, Mike Kennison, the work that he has completed. I'll let you read through that, but I think needless to say, you can see in the short time he's been here, there has been significant work that he has been able to accomplish in the parks. And also, a couple important events that are coming up. Rededication of the Fisherman's Memorial is September 5th. I will give you more details on time. Obviously, where they're moving it to the new site over by the Harbor Master Facility. Reminder that the primary election is a Thursday, not a Tuesday, September 8th. September 15th, we're very excited that the U.S. Coast Guard Band has offered to come and play a free concert at the Knox Middle School for us, and at 7:00 PM. And you'll all be getting free tickets, and I hope to see you all there. And we're hoping that our application for a renewal of our Coast Guard designation will be approved by then, and we can sort of tie this all into one event that night. On September 22nd is the Fourth Annual Mayor's Boy Scout Breakfast and recognition of distinguished community leaders. This year, the recipients are Steve Hines, Lee Woodworth, and President Tom O'Brien. So I would hope that you would all come and join us for this breakfast and recognition of these community leaders. And finally, I would just like to recognize Council Connell, who came back from the Pan-Mass Challenge, and congratulations on making the run. And I understand they raised...
Ride.
Run, yes, I'm sorry. Ride. And I understand that they raised $500 million for cancer research. Congratulations. And anyone else in our community who participated in this event, thank you very much. Questions? I'll see you for executive session.
See you later. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Consent? Wait till everyone leaves. Move on to consent agenda?
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for July 11th. There are two transfers. Transfer 23 from Sustainability Department, solid waste fee of $40,000, to Household Waste, $20,000, and Chipper, $20,000, to go to Budget and Finance Committee. There's a second transfer, number 24, Parks Maintenance, $10,000, to part-time employee, same amount, $10,000, Budget and Finance Committee. There are four communications. First one is 77, communications regarding Seacoast Taxi, as to be referred to license and permits. Next is number 80, Special Event App, Old Newburyport Day at the Mall, to go to public safety. Communication number 81, Mark Juan Letter, regarding a tow truck, tow truck, excuse me. That's to be referred to public safety and Neighborhood and City Services. Neighborhood and City Services is a change to the consent agenda. Communication number 82, Atria Gratitude Day, to go to license and permits. There are five appointments. First one is Kim Cootum, 44 Hale Street, as an alternate on the Tree Committee until 5/1, 2018. Joe Lamb, 14 Russia Street, the Planning Board, until August 31st, 2021. Paul C. O'Brien, 483 B Marmack Street, to the CPC until 5/1, 2019. Maureen Louise Pomeroy, 62 Boardman Street, to the ZBA, 8/1, 2021. And Richard Popolos, 169 Apache Way, Assistant Harbor Master, until 8/1, 2019. And that, with that small change of Neighborhood and City Services, is the amended consent.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Move on to the regular agenda. The first item is mayor's update. Need motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to communications.
First communication is, with respect to Loretta's, it comes in two... If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm going to recuse myself on the next four items.
Okay. Thank you. I'll note that in the record. First is an emergency preamble on communication number 78, Outdoor Seating, which reads as follows, pursuant to Charter Section 29B and further defined, emergency exists due to the city council meeting once in July and again in August and the short outdoor seating season. The next scheduled council meeting is August 29th. Therefore, the city council hereby affirmatively declares that an emergency exists, such that this communication may be voted upon at its first introduction. That communication is the outdoor seating for Loretta Restaurant. That's submitted by Councilor Devlin.
Motion to approve the emergency preamble?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
If I may, I agreed to sponsor this and the other one because it's been done before. Last time was with Anchor Stone Deck Pizza. I think we should try to help our businesses if we can, especially in a short season for an outdoor patio. I would note the emergency is largely due to our schedule and vacation schedules. Last, we had one meeting in July and one meeting in August. The July meeting, there was no licensing and permits. There was no quorum because both Councilor Earls and myself were not here. We were on vacation. So just customary things like this, I think we should help our businesses if we can.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Present. Move on to communication 78.
Communication 78 is the application itself by Loretta. It has a drawing attached, the sign-off from the AD Coordinator, business owner, and...
sign off from the AD Coordinator, business owner, and the requisite insurance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Move on to the next one, communication 79, Emergency Preamble.
Communication Emergency Preamble, 79, again, states exactly the same language, submitted by Counselor Devlin. It's with respect to Commune slash Cafe di Siena, which also has a sign off from the ADA Coordinator, a sketch plan, and the requisite insurance.
Motion to approve emergency preamble. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Present.
Move on to the communication itself, 79?
Again, that is the outdoor seating, communication 79. The name of the property on is Tracy Place Limited Partnership, with respect to 33 Pleasant Street, the cafe there. And as I mentioned before, the sign off, sketch plan, and insurance.
I wish the petitioner would come in front of us, ask him some questions.
Beg for mercy.
Have a question? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Somebody want to break them the bad news?
Six went down. We brought in someone else to break the tie. Communication 83?
That's the event tasting on Inn Street, as submitted by Ann Orman, on the counselor's desk. I should mention there is insurance on the way. There's a blanket insurance, not specific for this, but it will be specific for this, I'm told by the director.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, we, yeah, we need the emergency preamble. That's the day.
Motion to receive and file?
Motion to refer to Public Safety or License and...
Neighborhood and City Services or?
Public Safety.
Public Safety.
License and permit.
License and permit.
I think it's license and permits.
Public Safety.
There's no second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Public Safety.
Public Safety. Appointment, second reading?
There are two. First appointment is number 55, Patricia A. Moore, Chief Procurement Officer. And second appointment number 56, MJ Verding, 18 Spring Street, near Newport to the Planning Board until 8/1/2021.
Motion to approve collectively.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Appointment 62?
Appointment 62 is the appointment of, reappointment of Julie Langaron to Treasurer/Collector until 8/30/2019.
Motion to approve?
Second. First reading you have to...
Oh, sorry. Pardon me. Withdraw. Motion to receive and file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Move on to orders.
First order is the CPC recommendations submitted by Counselor Tontar. Would you like me to read the amounts, Mr. President?
We're going to take those individually, Counselor?
It's going, it's first...
Going to committee.
Going to committee, okay. Read the amounts then.
So going first is YWCA at Hillside, recommended $150,000. Clipper City Rail Trail, $100,000. New Report Affordable Housing Trust, $50,000. Historic Structure Survey Update, $15,000. The Tracket Fuller Field, $150,000. Joppa Park Phase 2, $25,000. Open Space Reserve Fund, $100,000. Bell Bell Congregational Restoration, $39,000. Rehabilitation of Perkins Printing and Engraving Plant, $14,000. Harbor Light Plum Island, $12,000. City Hall Bond Payment, $168,000. Open Space Bond Payment, $104,000. Stadium Bond Payment, $132,000. Cherry Hill Parcel B Bond Payment, $13,000. Administrative Cost, $12,000, submitted Counselor Tontar.
Move to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Order 59 is a $615,000 Plum Island Sewer Valve Pit Monitoring System Capital Project Request, which reads as follows, City Council hereby appropriates $615,000 to the valve pit monitoring system project in accordance with Federal Emergency Management, so-called FEMA, mitigation proposal to prevent future failures of the system. And then it goes on to state certain percentages, submitted Counselor Tontar.
Move to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Order 60?
Order 60, that $835,000 is appropriated to pay costs for various drainage projects throughout the city, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Now to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow the same under 44 Section 7.1, pursuant to any other enabling authority, et cetera, submitted Counselor Charles Tontar.
Move to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, next. Order 61.
Order 61, City Council of City New Report authorizes increase to the spending limit for the Medicare Medicaid revolving fund from $15,000 to $25,000 for FY 2017, Counselor Tontar.
Move to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. 62.
62. That $60,000 is appropriated for cost of a new Harbor Master visiting voter facility, including all costs incidental. In addition to the $1,082,000 previously appropriated, bringing the total appropriation of $1,142,601. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under 44 Section 7 Sub. 3, submitted Counselor Tontar.
Move to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
63?
63 would be the ACO Contract Amendment between the Town of West Newbury and the City of Newburyport. Essentially, the pertinent parts, I believe, are this agreement shall take effect July 1, 2016, for a three-month term. At the end of that, the initial three-month term may be extended through June 30, 2017 by the Newburyport City Council and the Board of Selectmen, et cetera, et cetera.
Motion to refer to license and permits?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Order 64?
Order 64 is by Counselor Cronin to amend the established list of crosswalks by including Mermack Street from Codwell's Court to Pop Crowley Way and Kent Street at Mermack.
Motion to refer to Public Safety?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Order 65?
65.
The City Council of City of Newburyport approves the following licensed contractor for the construction year for water, sewer, drain, layer, roadway, and sidewalk guaranteed builders and developers, 14 West Street Douglas Mass, submitted Counselor Agaman.
Motion to refer to Public Utilities? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Move on to order 65.
Order 65 is...
66, I'm sorry.
Licensed contractor called Guaranteed Builders, also submitted by Counselor Agaman for the same year, for the same purpose. They're from 46 Prince Street, Dandrus Mass.
Motion to refer to Public Utilities? Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Move on to ordinances?
Ordinance is, ordinance number 14 of this year. It is a zoning amendment relating to the sidewalks that probably is...
Motion to refer to Planning and Development?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That's it for consent agenda? I mean, the regular agenda, move on to communications? I mean, to committee items? Budget and Finance?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Drain Education?
Nothing to report.
License and Permits?
Motion to remove Communication 70, When Pigs Fly?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This came before the License and Permits Committee, and it was an interesting discussion. Well, certainly, the floor is open to the other committee members to enhance or correct anything that I may be saying. This is a tough one. It's essentially a transient vendors permit request, and we don't have purview over transient vendors, as you well know, it goes to the License Commission. We discussed the idea that where does it stop? Once we allow one business to set up such shop in front of their store, what's next? And as much as we are very much pro-business and we do anything we can to help businesses, this is a tough one. We don't, we don't have an answer for it. So we're going to suggest that we receive and file it. I'll reach out directly to the applicant, talk to them, see what we can come up with. We have some ideas, perhaps they could simply offer samples as they walk the sidewalk, so on and so forth. But this was a tough one. So we booted it to receive it and file it, and welcome any ideas that you may have.
Any further discussion? Counselor?
I just have one question for the Chair of the Committee. Did Mr. Fleischer contact you?
Pardon me? We simply emailed back and forth. I didn't have a full conversation with him, and I will reach out to him directly after the result of this.
Thank you.
So, just if I may ask, so what's the practical implication of receiving file? Not approved, not considered approved, just nothing at this time, I guess?
That would be my take on it. We left it, and again, I turned to my fellow counselors that we were part of the discussion. If it's a transient vendors situation, it's not in our purview. There's really no, there's not, this is not a complete application for any type of anything. There's no insurance. It's unclear exactly what to do with it other than to have a discussion and see how we can help the gentleman further. And I will do that.
Counselor Devlin?
I mean, hit the right notes on, I think, three business-friendly people on licensing and permits in asking for city support and allowing us to introduce our concept to the city and stimulate new business. But they didn't provide us with any framework for how we could approve this and under what ordinance we would be approving this under. It's just a letter. It, transient vendors wouldn't come to us. Patio, you know, in extension of a common victualers, they don't have a common victualers. They didn't, they didn't supply us with that application. Merchandising, display, it's got some problems because it's actually removed from the front of their store and their door a certain number of feet, and we'd need more information for that as well. So it's really, it's an incomplete request. Forget about an incomplete application. They're not, they're not empowered, they're not telling us how we are empowered to do anything with this, is my position. I don't want to put words into my fellow committee members' mouths either.
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask if there feels that there's any value in simply tabling it for the moment, is to get more information. I mean, he's looking for 60 days, beginning July 15th, which is now approaching a month gone anyways. I just, I question, I mean, I don't know. I'm just offering that as a thought.
I'm happy to...
If we're waiting for more information, is some way we can...
I'm happy to...
If we don't deal with transient vendors, what good would it do? Go ahead.
I mean, again, I'm happy to retract my suggestion that of receiving file, if you want to table it, and I can report back to, after I have a conversation. I'm happy to do that, if I'm more comfortable with that, however you want to do it. It's up to the committee, it's up to the board body.
Counselor Connell?
Yeah, I think, I think the Chair's original recommendation was correct. If it's not an actionable item, why delay something that we can't act on? And what's the point of that? I think that it was appropriate to receive and file it. We're, you know, we acknowledge what they want to do, but they haven't done anything yet. So let's move on, and I'm sure the Chair will give them some advice on how to proceed if they want to pursue this.
I'll report back.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Next.
Motion to remove Communication 73?
Second.
What?
Mr. Chair, I have to recuse myself in this for perceived conflict of interest. Is it 73?
Oh, I jumped one, sorry. But yeah, 73, since we're there.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. We voted three to, all in favor of granting the permission to put a license, put a pool table in to the new business. Interesting discussion, discussion around how it's going to be monitored, how big the room was, or how big the room is, and what the intent. It sounds like it's just going to be just a, you know, sort of a small scale, just a place for a couple of pool tables. They answered all of our questions, and again, my fellow committee members can enhance the discussion. Very straightforward. So it's our recommendation to approve.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, here, Counselor Agaman, back.
Yeah, I'm sorry to backtrack. Motion to approve 72?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of three to one, three to nothing, all in favor. Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion to, motion to remove 75?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Again, unanimously, recommendation approval.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
That's all.
Thank you. Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing tonight.
Planning and Development?
Nothing to report.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove Communication 71?
Second.
Which one?
71, Geenie Geiger Crisis Center.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, this is an annual fundraiser that Crisis Center does. I think we're all familiar with it. It's basically the same course they've been walking for years. It's about 500 participants. They have all the appropriate sign offs.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Next.
Motion to remove the Communication 74 PMC Kids Ride?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you. Mr. President, this is on the Clipper City Rail Trail, Cashman Park. It's between 9 and 1. They've done this for several years, and it was a three to nothing approval in committee, and we've heard no feedback on problems from it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Next.
Motion to remove Order 57?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just adding Orange Street to the fair and federal resident parking area. It was submitted by Counselor Agaman and was approved in Committee 3.0.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That's it?
That's all.
That's it. Public Utilities?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight.
Rules Committee?
Captain, you're right.
Bit of the order. Counselor Zee?
Just like to announce that on Thursday night, 6:30 PM at Pittah Hall, we're having a Palm Island meeting about erosion and giving an update to residents and discussing the fencing project and some other associated topics. If anybody is interested and would like to attend, who is watching or listening. Thank you.
Sounds like fun. Just personally.
Anything else? Now, I need a motion going to executive session to discuss litigation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Need a roll call vote?
Yes, we do. Roll call to go into executive session.
Point of order, Mr. President? Go ahead. Who would be coming out of executive session? Or will the...
We won't be coming out of executive session, that will be the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of order, was this posted? Does it need to be posted? I think so. The meeting was posted. Part of the meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Roll call?
Roll call. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
For an executive session.